That's for, that's for Wilton.
I have.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm.
I don't think the PD one's up anymore, so.
So this is drop the beer permit wire only. Wine.
Wine.
All right, it's seven o'clock. Do a little call. Doc, here, Doc.
Yeah.
I just love you. Cheryl.
Yes.
Let's see, and Steve.
Yes.
And Ted.
Yes.
Do you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag. To the republic of America. And to the principle of liberty and justice.
Yeah. Kind of a motion to approve and or amend.
Second.
So move to approve.
Second.
Second from Doc. And we vote on that, and Doc.
Yes.
Doc.
Yes.
Ted. Steve.
Yes.
And Cheryl.
Yes.
Okay, the next thing is approve and or amend consent agenda. Consists of the minutes, pool allocations, TIF pay resolution. Uh, blooming ideas, line application, and precision pay number seven. Just a question. Precision pay, we're about done with the interior stuff though, aren't we?
We're, we're getting closer. Um, they just, they got drywall up in the council chambers. Uh, they're still working on their roof trusses. That's taking them a lot longer than they thought, so. That's, that's, that's what they were, been working on the last two weeks. Is that interior stuff.
They were telling me earlier, it's just hotting the biscuit up there. Man, can imagine what it's like now.
Yeah, they got, they got fans going up there.
And the other question I had was on TIF pay. We got some getting close to.
Yeah.
Being complete.
Right, the fif- fifteen years, you can see it up there. It's the fifteen year is the limit on most of those, I think. So that's the number.
It is.
Number pays, they have some.
It's all getting closer.
Yep. So be a couple dropping off in the next few years.
I wonder if I seen Doc grow a steak the other day. Who's that echoing?
Becky.
There's Becky. Becky. Oh, yeah. Um, gotta get a motion for approval.
Oh.
Second.
Doc and Steve. Okay, we'll vote on it. Doc?
Yes.
Doc?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
Wayne? Yeah.
Yes.
I got Steve. All right, motion carries. Citizens to appear.
Do you want to say something?
Um, I want to talk about, should I talk about the zoning?
Yeah, we're, well, we're, yeah, we're doing a, a public, we're doing a public hearing for that, if you want to speak during that time.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
About the.
The zoning, what?
Zoning.
Zoning, public hearing.
But also when you come to that day, I want you to give us a couple of words on inspections. Okay?
That's what I'm gonna talk about.
Just two words, all.
Just two.
Not fifteen.
Do you have a comment there, I hope, right?
All right. Um, consultants, Becky. You're up back, Becky. You're unmute, unmute Becky.
Unmute? All right, I got it, got it.
There you go.
Got it, okay. Um, well, we are, we will start working on the other three homes on the corners. Down, you know, at the stop end here pretty soon. Um, and I know they're working on the sidewalks now, and we have to work with the city for the sidewalk. Cause we'd like to have the sidewalk go all the way around the block, so. That's one thing, and then tomorrow we have the IAV thirty-eight corridor meeting. And I know that Sean is gonna come meet with you as a group. Um, your planning session and your next meeting. So to see what you guys would like to see happen out there. Any questions?
That's it, huh?
Well, that's, yeah. I'm Freedom Rock, but I know Ted's gonna talk about that, so, um, I'll let him do that.
Okay, thank you, Becky.
Welcome.
A public hearing resolution, adopting the budget amendment.
Yeah, so I have a public hearing first, and then after that, you need to adopt it.
Okay. I open the public hearing.
I didn't get any comments at all.
I didn't.
And actually, I could just say that for all of them that I have on there. And I'm not talking about it, cause I didn't get a comment on any of that stuff, so.
Yeah, and the budget, uh, you know, one of the key things, it has nothing to do with taxes, a lot of other funds.
Right.
That we gotta change the budget. You know, it's a new garbage truck, some other things of that nature. Okay, if there's no other discussion on it, then I'm gonna close the public hearing. Now, how about a motion to adopt the budget amendment?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Move by, move by Doc and Cheryl second. We'll vote on it. Cheryl?
Yes.
Doc?
Yes.
Doc?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
And Steve?
Yes.
Motion carries. Hearing on Simpson Memorial. If you remember, that was, uh, for them to do some bonding. There's no cost to the city, no exposure to the city. It's just a benefit to them. We run them through our direction. And this is the second time we've done it, so.
And I think Chad's on here, I don't know if he wants to speak or not, but he's just kinda monitoring what we're doing here, so.
Comment?
Yeah, I, I was just on in case somebody had questions. I, I think you approached it correctly. It, it doesn't really impact the city. It's more just between Wilton Retirement Community and Hills Bank.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And there's good reason for them to do it. I think they get a more favorable rate now, or can get. So, uh, you know, just something, we need to support them in our community. That's where we're at. Okay.
So I think you need to approve the agreement, then.
Okay, this says hearing.
Yeah.
So do we need to close the hearing?
Yeah, close the hearing, then we need to.
Close the hearing now?
Yes.
Can I take a motion for approval? I'm signing that agreement with Simpson.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement.
Steve moved.
Second.
Doc's second. Okay, we'll vote on it. Cheryl?
Yes.
Doc?
Yes.
Doc?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
And Steve?
Yes.
Okay, rezoning, re-zoning hearing. Chris, you wanna?
Um, I, we, we have Nick Surax on here from Wota Cooper. Um, uh, I have, in your packets, we had, uh, the PowerPoint that, uh, um, that Wota Cooper gave us for the, uh, P and Z meeting. And I've got that up there, if anybody wants to take a look at it, it's in your package as well, so.
Chris, my one, his own meeting.
Yes, yeah.
And he was a hundred percent voted in favor of changing the zoning. Only concern we heard all night was, uh, from some neighbors that have been just, uh, worth, that they were concerned about water. You know, surface drainage coming off that, and I can say that we'll have to make sure that that is addressed.
Right.
During this process. Cause you've seen it as well, I think, when, when it really rains hard, it'll come off that field and probably just gush it down.
Right.
We just need to take care of that, I believe.
Yep. But Nick, did you have any comments?
No, um, I, I mean, I know some of you have already seen the, the packet of information that we gave Chris for the planning, um, commission meeting a couple of weeks ago. So unless you want me to run through that again, which I'm happy to do, um, might just be easiest if I answer any questions that you might have about the development or, or what we're up to.
Or maybe just a time, if you want. Nick, what was, the question was, what was your timeframe?
For, uh, for like the project timeframe?
Yes, please.
Sure, so, uh, we applied for, uh, federal financing from the Iowa Finance Authority back in March. Um, we should hear whether we are awarded in August. Here, we will be working, uh, towards, in April, possibly in May, construction start. Um, so from the time we get an award to the time we start, we would, you know, get our plans fully developed, fully engineered, get them vetted by, um, by you folks to make sure that, you know, we meet all your development standards, and we've got it engineered to deal with water, anything else. Um, and then assuming we start in, uh, either April or May, it's typically about a year construction period. So we'd be looking at, uh, completion in late spring of twenty twenty-two. Um, and typically, we'd like to start pre-leasing our units, um, about three months from when we know we can be completed. So we can be, you know, open with as full of a house as possible. Um, and so, you know, based on, on a similar sized project that, that we did a few years ago in Indiana, uh, we had the thing fully leased within two months of it opening.
Thank you. That's great. I think it's a great project. Okay, so we need to.
And then just so, just so everybody knows, I know we talked about the, the water, uh, stormwater issue, and I, I just wanna make sure that everybody understands that when, when Wota Cooper will need to submit a building permit for this and a site plan. And, uh, in order to get that approval, they'll have to get, uh, they'll have to get our engineering group, HR Green, to sign off on their stormwater, uh, plan.
Right, and, and just one thing we covered in the last meeting too, is that the Iowa Finance Authority also has to vet all of our plans as well. So not only do we have to get permits from you guys, but they review them as well, even when they're at the permit stage, and they have to bless them before we're allowed to begin construction. And then they also monitor construction throughout the entire process. So they would have a representative, their construction analyst would, uh, would be coming out on a monthly basis, um, sometimes more frequently, depending on what the event was, if we were doing like foundations or drywall or something like that. Um, and so that would be going on through the whole life of the project. So it's another set of, you know, eyes and ears on everything as well.
Okay. Dan, did you have some, some thought on zoning?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, members of the council. I'm here because I was at the, uh, the zoning meeting, and by, because I'm an adjacent property owner. Um, we own the four hundred West Wade there. Wanna start with that we've enjoyed a very good relationship with the city. Um, your folks, Chris, have done a great job with us personally, professionally, so I have no issue with anything there. You guys have done an awesome job. Second, I think this is a great project. Um, I'm fully in support of this sort of development. Well, my main concern though, is I think we as a community could benefit from an enforcement arm for code compliance. Uh, we have great zoning, and actually do a good job with zoning, and, uh, we submit drawings and setbacks. I mean, we look at how our services are connected, but there's not a mechanism in place to ensure those that are doing the construction are following safety and livability regulations. Um, as a remodeler, I've been in situations of, quote, current housing situations that are subpar. They're not safe, they're not consistent, um, and I think the only way you get your hands around that is with the same reasonable approach, is just to put in some regulation to make sure that we as builders are bringing that level of quality and safety up consistently for decades. Not all of them are not able to enforce anything that's gonna not let me build projects in Wilton because it's too expensive, but we, I think, owe it to our citizens as a community to just raise that level of professionalism. Similar to how Chris has done with, with the city, is they've, you know, stepped up the wastewater treatment plants and curb and gutter and utility connections, all those sorts of things. Um, other communities have done this. We walk out, there's an example of a very small community that has building code. They have inspections, reinforcements. Obviously, we do work in Quad Cities, Iowa City, North Liberty, Wind County, Johnson County, all those areas, um, with varying degrees of approach, but they all have some pay of identifying what the standards are, and then ensuring that standards are met to a reasonable degree of certainty. So I just wanna bring up that when this organization comes in and invests millions of dollars in our community, as an adjacent property owner, I wanna know that it meets fire code, it meets safe building code, that it meets electrical code, it meets everything it needs to, um, to make sure that those folks in there are, are safe. And as a builder, what that does for you professionally is levels the playing field. Um, Bob, if you wanna build a home, you have every right to do so. If you wanna modify your own home, you have every right to do so, but you need to do it to the same level that I as professional would. So when it resells to the next young couple that comes in, they know what to expect when they move in. They don't open up a wall and find, just, this happened, RV hose running to the kitchen sink, cost them an extra three thousand dollars on the project because nobody was, just making sure things made sense. So that's the only thing I wanted to bring up, whether this is the right form or not, I don't know. But if you have any questions, um, we've had, this is our fourteenth year. I'm second vice president at the state level for the Home Builders Association, so I'm plugged in statewide with what folks are doing. And we don't want regulation unnecessarily, but we want an even consistent professional playing field, and I think, um, Wilton would benefit from that, so. If you have any questions specific, I'd love to answer, but.
Thank you, Dan.
It's probably not right time.
Yeah, no, I think, Dan, I think he would be a good one to maybe be a consultant to how to, how to get started, maybe start it out slow. I know.
Over a period of twenty years.
I know the county was talking about restarting up something like that, cause they asked me at the WDC meeting. One of the, one of the supervisors that's on the meeting from Mustang County said, you guys got anybody that inspects, you know, really inspector?
We started with.
Well, I'm just saying that we've, I talked a little bit about this, and it's not that we have to hire someone full-time. For us, we could probably share it with several other towns. Or you find some of those retired that has it, can take the test and has the skills to be a part-time job for them. So, you know, there's many ways to skin it, but, you know, we're, we're pushing three thousand folks here now. Uh, it's, it's a little different than maybe it was a few years, ten, twenty, thirty years ago. So it may, they wanna take a look at it a little bit differently.
My thought would be, how deep do you wanna go with that? Say I wanna add an electrical plug in my house. Is that a, something that would come under an umbrella like that? I mean, obviously, I don't wanna burn myself down or kill myself.
Yeah.
I mean, how far down will that reach?
I agree, and that's a discussion we need to have, or get some recommendations.
I've, I've seen them do it with stereo wire.
It's a reasonable, Doc, reasonable.
No, I said.
Yeah, I know.
I went. The insulation's a little thin. Like stereo wire.
Oh, goodness.
Speaker wire. Like speaker wire, and they, they hooked up another outlet. And I'm going.
Oh, my God, that's asking for it.
What's wrong? I think it worked for a while. What's the fuse plug?
It worked, it worked for a while.
Tell them, tell them, no, the wire, you started to place up there.
I think we have to get a committee to kinda think about personal, cause we have to figure out how, I mean, we kinda discussed this earlier, and it just kinda got put under the rug. But I think one of the big things is how to pay, you know, we gotta pay for it. You know, we can't hire a full-time.
Sharing is what you.
Sharing would be, but even then, I mean, do you put that as part of the cost?
You will see your costs of your building permits.
But I think it's probably time, well, like you say, Wilton getting bigger now, um, when you buy a home, especially a, you know, secondhand home, you kinda wanna know what you're getting. Boy, those walls can hide a lot.
Let me tell you a couple of stories about California.
Um, why don't I do a little research with some of the cities in the hall, so-called? Uh, Dan, I get a little input from him as well.
Yeah, I think that's a good one.
From there.
Happy to help, there are proven models out there. Like I mentioned, Walcott brought it on board, and I think Terry, you're a full-time inspector for Iowa City, inspects in four or five different municipal municipalities.
Hmm.
Um, and there's, there's good ways to go about it that aren't California crazy, um, by any means.
Yeah.
Oh, exhibited.
The other thing to think of is, how about you're a registered contractor, you're not a licensed contractor? So you're a veterinarian, but for fifty bucks and some improved insurance, you could be a contractor by noon tomorrow. Um, so there's nobody looking out for validity of the structure being built from my licensing standpoint.
Well, that's, that's a good, that's a good start. Dan brought this up at the meeting, and we've talked about it, so just as well, let's, uh, move ahead and see where, where we go with that.
Anybody else have anything for Nick? I know Nick's on, on your board, so.
We need to, uh, we need to do.
Close the pub- public hearing and approve the rezoning.
Exactly, so, anything else? If not, I'll close the public hearing. Now, do I have a motion to rezone the property?
So move.
I'll second.
Move second.
Point. Kevin, point.
You're all in good.
I'm keeping the California guy.
Let you, let you vote first.
Okay.
Ted. Steve?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Doc?
Yes. And Doc? Yes.
Motion carries.
Thanks, Nick.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. I end up on Facebook.
Thanks, Dan.
Late or something.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Goodbye. Um, City Hall, plans and specs, public hearing.
Yeah, that's a public hearing for the plans and specs for, for, and I, we sent to that, I sent that out, it's, it's, it's pretty lengthy. So, uh.
I do have a copy. Just look at the pictures. They look good.
I, I did, uh, I, I did have somebody look them over for us, and there were a couple of questions that we, we had to clarify with it, but, I mean.
Well, I opened the public hearing, so we can discuss it.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Sorry, got ahead of myself.
No, it doesn't, they're not doing anything in here, though, are they?
No, it's just, it's just outside work.
Outside work, okay.
And how about, you know, Ted has brought this up, where the, and I guess they don't know, where the doors used to be?
There's an option here to show.
Yes, there's, yes.
And it kinda, you know, it's pretty much what I had, you know, thought of.
Okay.
The doors were big, tall rollups, so this architecturally, the, the space looks right, you know? I don't know what the materials are there, but.
When I moved to town, the fire engines were still in here.
Still in here, were they?
Seventy-five, yeah.
So about, I guess all I'd wanna, you know, is, is that brick work or just composite? I don't know if materials.
Uh, I don't know, this, I just, I was just bringing up the cost estimate here for what.
That's an optional cost anyway, I think, isn't it? This, this is a.
You know what, I, I don't remember now, I was going through that stuff with Stephanie. I think it's an alternate.
Yeah.
On there. But I, I, I don't think there's a lot of choice. If you go out and really look at it, which I hadn't really done, until I walked around with Stephanie, it does need some work. We're gonna have to do something with it anyway, so. And I thought that what she had kinda put together, it really did look nice.
I like the, the spacing and the shape and everything, I just, you know, I was just curious of what the, whether brick or plaster.
I don't think it was brick, and I don't remember off the top of my head, I can find that out, um.
Well, that's, that's not important right now.
Okay.
But I like, I liked outlook.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I think that's what she was going for, something that would look like.
Give you that air.
Right.
Well, we talked that, you know, we've done the interior, we were to a point where we had to do something with this building, cause honestly, it was going to, it was gonna fall, fall down.
Well, we found out.
Yeah, and I mean, the roof about did, but, you know, I think it's our responsibility as a council mayor to take care of the structure. I think it's our responsibility to keep it in good shape for years to come. But we can nickel and diamond, do a little bit of time, but I think we need to do this.
I agree, I think what we're doing now is, this is just, this'll be the center place for the city council for the next fifty, you know, years, by the way.
Did, did we tie, did we tie up money? I mean, did we get a, did we borrow the money for this yet? I mean, did we?
Yes, we have.
That, because we might have borrowed it at a real good time. You know, the, you know, the future's a little uncertain here to where money could be a lot more, um, costly.
Yeah.
But it's one of those things, do you have a choice? It's, it's gonna cost you more later, should've been done thirty years ago.
Yeah, probably.
But here we are, so, anyway, that's my feeling about it. We've had, and I know Chris and I've had that discussion, it's gone wrong.
And if you, if you walk around the building, you can see the, the window sills are, are dry routed, they're dry routed around the doors, the, um, the soffits are, are rotten, there's birds in them, and sometimes they actually get into the building because they come in through the soffit and then fly around.
I thought that eighty-eight ramp in front was a clever.
Yeah.
Solution. I didn't even think of doing it that way.
Right, so, yeah, I thought that looked nice, at least in the pictures, in the pictures and drawings, it looked nice, so. Yeah, I, I agree with you, Mayor, at some point in time, you have.
Speaker's gonna live.
At some point in time, you, you know, you gotta take care of those.
So we can kick the can down the road, but.
Yeah, yeah.
The circumventance is catch up to stuff, it wasn't done.
Right, yeah, yeah, I agree.
Plant the tree that shade will ever sit in.
Yes. Steve getting in doubt, deep, deep thoughts.
Well, anything more on the public hearing, spass public hearing?
And then I just need approval, you guys just need approval, then.
Okay, close that public hearing and I'll take a motion.
Second.
Ted and Steve.
See Ted got to do that one. One by those.
Little vote out of Cheryl?
Yes.
Doc?
Yes.
Doc?
Yes.
Ted?
Yes.
And Steve?
Yes.
Correspondents? Kent, I didn't receive any, too. Oh, mayor items. We're talking about one thing, it's about, we got some twelve-year TIF, three years ago, we're gonna get some real money back from these projects, so it's a good deal, that's what we did in the first place. Uh, the other thing is, we've been asked by the school, they're gonna have a senior parade, I think, this Sunday. They want to do that, wanna follow the homecoming parade.
Founders Day.
Founders Day.
Founders Day.
Founders Day route. To do that.
Six o'clock?
Two.
What, what, two o'clock on Sunday?
It's Sunday.
Be ready, they're going right by you, that's right.
So I'm gonna say, let's say any objection, it's, it's, I'm gonna approve it, just be done with that.
Are we having, are we having gin buckets?
I bet there's a couple, actually. Okay, it's done. Chris, maybe you can tell them.
Yeah, I, yeah, I don't.
We're fine.
Dave and I'll get together and make sure we get the route.
Oh, there's Dave.
Plan out, so.
Where you at?
Yeah. Um, that's one of the things I have. Dave, do you have any comments, what's going on with the police?
Uh, no, we're good, we're just plugging along as usual, doing what we can, showing, you know, how to open things back up.
Okay, any, you know, we've opened things up a bit on this, uh, distancing for the virus, uh, no problems you've seen with thousand people in school or anything?
No, no, actually, um, I, I think for the most part, people are respecting the social distancing rules pretty well. Um, they're starting to get to the point where weather's getting nicer, and we're getting more people, uh, you know, having outdoor bar, things like that. Um, probably haven't been many more than ten people out there, but if there are several people out there, they seem to be congregating in groups, you know, four people over here, four people over here. We haven't had any problems with businesses, uh, so far, I think people are respecting the rules.
Good, good to hear. Good to hear. All right, staffing's okay, and everything's going with one person down? We're doing good?
Uh, we're, we're, we're getting through it.
Okay. All right. Um, I guess that's all I have. Council items, first thing, you have the Jip Properties land swap?
Yeah, so the WDC and, and, uh, Brad Jip swapped the, the land for, so we could do our stormwater project, and that's this pro, this area right here, uh, that the city will then own. And most of it's gonna be taken up with, with the stormwater, I can show you that in just a minute. The Brad, though, would like to lease back this square up here, he's got his hunting, uh, lines and stuff that he displays there.
Those little buildings are there to be hunted by.
He actually spent quite a bit of money on that to, to put rocks down and stuff to, so he could display that stuff there. He would just like to lease that small corner back and keep that there. I talked with, um, um, uh, Teresa at, at HR Green, who does the, who's doing the stormwater stuff, and she said it won't impact them at all, and this is, this is the areas on sketch. That's the area on the sketch, so it's not gonna impact anything that we're doing in there. So I just would like some, some sort of approval from you guys that we'll go ahead and put together some sort of lease. And our, I already talked to Julie, and Julie said that won't be a problem to put together, just like.
We're not gonna use Brandon, he's already put the money in it.
Do you want to hold, hold a motion?
Yeah, yeah, I'd like you, some approval from you guys, so we go ahead.
Doc, Doc. We got, we got, Cheryl.
Yeah.
Doc.
Yes.
Doc.
Yes.
Ted.
Yes.
Ted, Steve.
Thank you. And that's, that's kind of what I told him too, and originally, we kind of wanted to put it in as a part of the purchase agreement, but it was gonna complicate things because of the land swap, and then they'll have the land swap, they give the property to us, so we just, uh, we just did it this way, so, we'll get the lawyer put together, just a simple lease document, and we'll, well, that'll have to come before you guys do be approved as well.
Okay, number two, new hire.
Yeah, we, we, um, uh, interviewed three people for the parks job, um, all three interviews went very well, I wouldn't have had a problem hiring any of the three, uh, that we interviewed. Um, however, I, I, you know, both Bobby and I agreed that we thought Austin was a, a little bit better candidate than the other two. So, we, we'd just like to recommend that we hire Austin Croson to be our new parks guy.
And you'll be thirty-five hours?
Thirty-five hours, yep.
A week?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve Austin. Ladies for Cheryl, second. Okay, we'll vote on it. Cheryl. And Steve.
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks, guys, I appreciate that.
IPC parking?
All right, so, um, uh, Industrial Packaging called me the other day, uh, late last week, and this area that you guys can't see yet is a gravel parking lot, now, this, you can see this is our street, the concrete ends right here, and then, actually, the right-of-way continues all the way up to the highway here, uh, their cars park here, and they'd like to asphalt this, but they actually asked to asphalt the whole thing because people drag gravel into their building, uh, so they said, you know, we're asphalting this, would you mind if we just did the whole area so we wouldn't have people dragging, uh, uh, gravel into our building?
What is there ever be a chance that we have an opening go straight through there, 'cause that lines up with, uh?
It does, I, I think there's a distinct possibility of that, but, uh, and I mentioned that to them, I said, I said, even if you asphalt it, it's still our right-of-way, and if we want to tear it up and.
The only thing I wanted to.
Then that's what we're gonna do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Well, probably all the ways out anyway, they probably be fine when they put it on, I don't, I don't see anything.
I, I don't see anything in the near term.
Think the DOT would.
Yeah, I, I would guess he'd have to replace that asphalt before we would.
Quite honestly, I think way back when, when we developed that as a industrial site, we looked at that, and DOT went nuts, but us putting another entrance.
Oh, really?
Oh, is that our?
Together?
Oh, yeah, close to Third Street.
You have to have another, because it'd be, it'd be a massive.
I mean, they were, that's why, if you notice.
Right.
That's how we go into the.
Right.
Industrial park, it's not there, it's down below, so.
Right.
And also, yeah, so, but I think that's fine, I don't know, do you need, you want some more motion?
Yeah, I, I'd like some approval that they did, they could do that.
Okay, next turn.
So move.
Okay. Second? Okay, I'll say.
Jeez, your face.
I want to, I want to be on that shit. I guess he seconded it, so, we'll put it, Cheryl.
Yeah.
Doc.
Yeah.
Doc.
Yes.
Steve.
Yes.
Ted.
Yes.
Maybe you can get the new strip joint coming in.
Yeah. About that asphalt parking lot there. Can you hold it or? How about other council items? Anything you guys?
Oh, that's one of your topics, Bob, how about the, how about anything with the sludge? We're paying four thousand dollars for all that sludge away, we talked once about possible other.
Selling?
Selling, or they don't work, nothing.
We, uh, we, we did some research on that, and this is the best price we can get for it, we, we actually bid it out at one time, we had two or three bidders for it, I don't remember now.
Yeah.
Um, you know, that's.
The thing is, we've never, it's gonna cost us some money to analyze it, to sell it, but.
Yeah.
You know, when Moros, Jerry Moros has, and Dustin, they have tons of it brought from Davenport, and I realize it's dewatered and so forth, but they bring tons of it and spread it on their fields semi after semi load of it, but it kind of makes me wonder if we can have some opportunity.
Yeah, I think there's some economies of scale with that, and with our plant, the size of our plant, it's just not economically feasible. But I know that one over there in Quad Cities is an enormous one.
But we, we gotta keep it on our radar, because it is being done and being done successfully, now, you can't put it on a carton, but you certainly raise corn with it.
Right.
And feed it to your cattle, you know?
Right.
So.
What, like, just, just an idea, the thirteen thousand dollars, how many loads of sludge is that roughly?
Oh, I forget what the bid was for, yeah, if.
I'm just curious, don't think.
I, I'd have to look it up, it was so many cents per gallon is what it cost us.
Is that the one where we got the street all messed up?
Yeah.
People were complaining?
Yeah.
Now, is that a liquid that they haul out?
What?
Is it in liquid?
It's a liquid, yes, it's a liquid, slur, slur.
We thought it's dirt.
Was it close to a creek, could de-water it, the piles behind the place?
Well, the, the problem is, if you're gonna de-water it, then you gotta have a whole new, all, whole system to do that, and then, you know, you gotta pay for that system then, so, you wanna spend another million dollars there, just thaw it out to the field right next to it that we own, so.
Remember they had a pump go out at a blow station, I see? Pretty expensive pump.
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember the particulars about that. Um, it was.
Towel or something?
It was, I don't remember what the, what the thing, one was running and the other one wasn't, and there was some relay or something that was wrong, and it actually ended up burning up one of the pumps because the other one wasn't running, it was basically running just one pump. So they have, usually have two pumps and they alternate to keep the wear even, and I think that's what happened with that, but I have to, I'll have to go look for sure.
But I don't worry.
No.
I don't want to be on that, that's right, never. The only other thing I was gonna mention too, because we're providing fertilizer for our land down there, I really think we need to cancel and have a rebid of the farm leases down at our farm. Uh, how many, thirty acres we got over there, roughly? It's, it's all on a floodplain, but I think we ought to cancel it, we're providing free fertilizer too, then we get ninety-nine dollars an acre, so.
Yeah.
Just, just an idea. Okay, anything else, move council?
Uh, Freedom Rock, please do. Obviously, if you've driven by, you can see the progress that's been made, uh, RVM landscaping has made tremendous progress. Uh, the wall that you see down there is the height, and there'll be some columns in there with capstones on that, so he's basically pulled off, Bubba's in town to paint it, he's, uh, met with him, uh, Becky Hansen and I met with him, uh, this evening, and he's gonna start working on it tonight, put a primer coat on, start work on the flag, we're meeting him, with him and, uh, for breakfast in the morning, discuss the various scenes, the murals that can be painted on, so, so. Uh, we're at two hundred and five papers sold, uh, we're going to insert a don't miss out thing into the utility bill this month in town, we're getting those printed up, I'll have them in your hands tomorrow afternoon, uh, Chris is gonna put a thing on the city Facebook, we do the Facebook stuff and everything, we're trying to pull some muscatine muscle into it if we can, so we're hoping with some pictures of, hey, it's a progress, legitimate site, it's real, they're really doing it, that we'll get some and, uh, participation that way. It would look like we're gonna shut off paper engraving sales in July, which will allow the paper to finish what he has, which will then allow Rodney to lay the papers that he has, which then allows Jake Hoegstra, the last board, to finish it off, and then Rodney could come back in, put in the brick chips in the three circles, uh, we're still waiting to see how it works out with the Muscatine County supervisors who have this Civil War era cannon that they have suggested that we might use, um, that might be something we can do during summer months when the weather's not so terrible, and then, the way we've constructed the site, we would be able to roll that off and holler it around and start the deep over the harsher winter months, so, that's up in the air, I, I have to check with Taskcom, they're the ones who are trying to get your tank from moving, but it's only a thirteen-foot diameter circle, so it's gonna be a pretty small tank.
I want to be good.
Yeah. So, yeah, it's, it's, uh, it was like a hurry up, wait, hurry up, wait, oh my God, here we are, and it's, it's going quick now, so, we're looking at being really essentially done mid-August with the project. Uh, it remains to be seen when we might try to do an official rand opening, uh, we, you know, we bandied about a little bit, maybe Founder's Day, or maybe weekend after Labor Day or something, but those are all things that are up in the air right now, as far as how we do that part, so.
It's, it's great access, you know, to the cities.
I, I think it's gonna look like it belongs there, which is the hardest thing when you do something like that, that you don't drive down, but oh my God, what is that?
Thing.
So I think this one's gonna blend in pretty.
Well, and it's nice and it, it's there right when you turn down.
You can see it.
You know, it's, 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 like you say, it looks like it's supposed to be there.
Yeah, so, I mean, sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't, so, and I know it's gonna be that big, if I draw the pictures a little smaller, but.
That tent will be up there the whole time, there, there?
Uh, yeah, he, well, he gets done with the painting, um, my idea, of course, I don't know that, that in and out to paint a rock, was to then we tarp the rock, they take the tent away.
Oh, okay.
But, uh, meeting with Bobby says you don't wanna do that because the wind will blow that tarp and rub it, and rub it down to the stump, so, essentially, the Freedom Rock will be visible, and that might even help us sell papers too.
Yeah, that's true.
So, that, that's the whole big push, you know, tell a friend, we were at two hundred and five papers, we kind of figured if Tipton did six hundred and eighteen, Muscatine County should be a thousand, and we may or may not make it, it's gonna be a nice site regardless, but, uh, it's, it's, it's been a pretty good effort, I think it's gonna turn out to be a nice little asset down there.
Yeah, looks good too.
Very nice. Okay, one thing we forgot to do is approve the bills, you probably like that, that, when you, so we've got a motion to pay the bills.
I'll sign it, I had a.
We'll vote if you can, okay, I'll go ahead, Cheryl.
Yes.
Doc?
Yes.
Uh, yes.
Yes.
And Steve.
Yes.
Okay, Cheryl.
Um, I was just going about landscaping near the intersections, I don't know if anybody's come down Mauer Street, but there's this gorgeous plant growing up, and you have to pull up almost to pass the stop sign on Mauer and the highway, and with all the trees down the line and then this bush is growing up, it's really difficult to have, you know, I don't know if anyone else noticed that? Come down Mauer.
I don't come down Mauer.
Which corner, north, north, west?
Just right here in the corner, to this garden, that.
Yeah, herb, like, tulips and everything?
Bush thing that's grown up and you can't see it on the highway.
It's not on the corner per se, but it's down.
It's that far enough that when you're sitting, you know, at this, you can't, your vision down the road, you have to pull clear up to practically pass the stop sign to get a good view because of the trees and all, it's just the angle, I don't know, I didn't know if there's a ordinance about landscaping up on the.
Oh, I'm sure that was a problem, so.
I will look into that.
It's a beautiful piece, but it's just making it really hard to see down, I mean, it's grown up so much now that it's kind of a problem.
And if you pull up too far on highway, everybody likes to come off the highway and sort of.
Yes.
Cut the corner, yeah, they kind of, every, we're all guilty of it.
Well, unless you drive that a lot, which I do because that's how I get downtown, you don't.
Okay.
I, I must be used to it, I drive down it quite a bit, I must just be.
Well, if you're in a pickup, you're probably up.
Oh, I might be high enough, yes, you're right.
If you're in a car, you're a little lower, so you don't have that.
Yeah, good point, that's probably why.
It could be probably.
Right. I'll, I'll take a look at it.
I just have one more question for the chief on the, on the Freedom Rock thing with the tent being around it, and the kids being in the park next door, are you, are you keeping a little extra watch on? That makes me a little nervous, there's something covered underneath there and beak.
That's, that's a really good point, we'll, we, we keep an eye on the, the basketball courts and, uh, um, park across the street, that's something that we'll, uh, we'll have to start keeping more of an eye on, for sure.
Okay, I, I, I'm sure you're aware, but I just.
Is there security after it's finished, keep an eye on for vandalism?
We have to figure out what we want, or how we can do that, I mean, I've got some thoughts on, you know, wireless cam, camera, meaning a Wi-Fi link to piggyback on for, you know, whether it's the city or whether the, set something up at the Historical Society with cable, uh, so that we can archive that stuff in case some some kid comes along and decides he wants to. I hate to say that, but I've seen that tent covering up, oh God, I hope the kids don't sneak in there. But, yeah, that was, that's a consideration for the final thing, is to have at least one, if not two cameras, so that we can see what's happening. They're keeping up, it's just, it's a matter of how to get it done.
Does he take his pain away?
Please don't do a Wi-Fi camera, Ted. That's a bad idea, go, go with a wired, it's, it's much more reliable and use, much more useful.
Well, I'd need about a seven hundred foot of RG fifty-nine.
Gamecracker, gamecracker on there.
Yeah, I think, I think.
That actually works better than a Wi-Fi camera, they're too unreliable, don't do it, not for something that important.
Well, I'll figure it out.
Well, yeah, you're right.
Thanks, Bo.
Yep.
Okay, anything else?
I, I got a couple things.
How about administrating?
We're, we're ready for that.
Yep.
Okay, so, I just wanted to mention that the library is gonna remain closed for the, uh, for the, for the time being, they're still doing curbside pickup, so you can call, get your books, um, they were not comfortable opening yet, and they're working on some protocols, so when they do open, they'll, they'll, they'll be okay. Um, their board is gonna meet again and, and, and address, you know, kind of address it as they see fit, so. Um, I wanted to mention to you guys, the late fee, we suspended late fee and shut offs until June first, uh, June first is right around the corner, so, bills go out pretty soon, and then, of course, the due date is June twentieth, so, um, we're gonna go back to late fees and, and shut folks off for non-payment, unless you guys say differently. And do you know what Muscatine's doing? Why don't you ask, Mike?
Everybody's starting to go back to work and things are.
I don't know, it's gotta go back.
Right, right. Okay, it's, it's gotta end at some point in time, I mean, you can't do it forever.
Part of it is, you don't want to let them get, or you don't want them to get too.
Yeah, they'll never get out.
Right.
I, I, I'm not saying, I don't mean in too deep, as, as, I just mean if they, if, in other words, you don't want to get so far behind that there's no way out.
Right.
Uh.
And, and I think we've got some customers that are, that are on that doorstep now, I think.
Well, and you said those non-payments are the same ones that were a year ago.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's just pretty similar last, yeah. And, and the, what we intend to do is, if people are, are behind, obviously, uh, they need to come in and set up a payment plan.
Right.
They're, it's not all due at once, you know, we're, we're gonna work with them so they get it paid, but, you know, I, I think it's about time, anyway, that we.
Were the non-payments both for electricity and water and sewer?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I think the non, you know, they're not paying the entire bill, not, not just one part of it, so, okay, I will, uh, we'll, we'll proceed as we, as directed before then. Um, uh, the other thing I wanted to ask, since we're doing more electronic stuff here, should we get those tablets for everybody, I know the mayor and, and, uh, uh, Doc have, have tablets? Um, is that something, do we want to do that for everybody? It's about two hundred bucks pop.
They're probably dying to move forward with paperless, I think we've killed enough trees.
I like it.
It really comes, really, really comes up when you have those, those manuals, the, the, the bid plans and stuff like that, you know, a lot of times, we're gonna select about what we copy off for you guys, you know, and then I'll email you stuff, but really, all that should be available to you and anybody else that would want to look at it, it's public record.
Well, I think the school board went to it decades ago, uh, I know a, um, hospital board for twelve year, nine years, got off of it too, and the first thing when I sat on it was getting a tablet, and that's where they sent everything to us, so.
Well, I, I think as part of that then, and, and I'll get with, with Bo to, to get this completed, but we're probably going to assign, uh, email addresses like you guys have, so everybody's got, um, a city email address, that's where your packet information will go, and that's, that's kind of how we'll do that, but then, we'll set the tablets up, all you gotta do is, is run them then, basically.
Keep them charged.
Yeah, yes.
And also, they're city property, when we get off, we get off of our, get out of our office, and it comes back to the city, so. And I, I'll tell you, I'm still using the iPad that I got from the hospital thirteen years ago, so, still running, it gets cracked, but it runs like crazy, so I still use it.
All right, well, I'll look into, uh, I'll look into purchasing those for, for all the council members there, and we'll see what that, I'll figure out what that's gonna cost them.
Check one out with the bike passenger.
So, all right, that was the other thing I wanted to ask about. Um, we tentatively talked about having a, a capital improvement plan meeting, that all got kind of set aside with all this stuff going on. Um, we want to do one at our next meeting, meeting, June eighth at six P.M., uh, capital improvement plan. And as part of that, I'd like, uh, MSA to come and present, uh, for their corridor plan, um, since we're doing that, they need, they would like to come and. Um, since we're doing that, they need, they would like to come and visit with the council about what you'd like to see on that corridor, you know, as, as part of that plan. So if we're going to do that capital improvement planning, we maybe set aside 15 or 20 minutes for MSA to discuss the entire corridor, what we want to do with that entire corridor, starting at Division Street going north. Well, not Division Street, actually Fifth Street all the way, including Division Street going north. So, okay. So let's plan on doing that. 6:00 PM on June 8th, we'll do the, uh, capital, capital improvement plan, including MSA's, uh, part of that. Uh, the other thing I just wanted to mention is, is, uh, I've been throwing up, uh, posts about once a week about the census. Seems like we've kind of stalled on our cen- census, uh, returns. Uh, last time I looked, I think it was about 71 or 73% um, reply rate, which is actually better than most in the state of Iowa, but you know, it's important for our town that everybody returned that census that possibly can. And I can't stress enough, to go online and do it is, is easy as it possibly can be. Yeah, at the most. Yes. Yeah. It's really simple. So just want to reiterate to our citizens to go out and do that. And if you guys on your, you know, trips out and about, or you're talking to people, might want to remind your constituents that if you haven't turned, if you haven't done the census yet, do the census. It's important.
Okay. Are they going to be sending people out?
Yes. And, and that's the other part of it. And I, I got an email just today, actually. Uh, they'd like to post something on our Facebook page for census jobs. Um, so, uh, she's supposed to be sending me something to post on her Facebook page, uh, so people can apply for jobs with the census in Muscatine County.
Okay. Yeah.
That's all I've got.
Okay. Just one other thing I forgot. This, and you probably saying, this is Lori's last week. Friday, we get her last day. So.
Lori?
Kid's assistant.
Yes, yeah. She kind of has been your assistant for the last couple of weeks.
But anyway, stop in if you can. I think at some point we're going to
Yeah.
Try to have a little open house.
In June, I have to find out. I don't remember what, we kind of set it a lot of tentative date in June to have a reception for, but you know, again, I don't know what it's going to look like yet. So.
So things have kind of opened up a little bit for, we can do it, but
Yeah.
We want to do that. But if you get a chance, stop by. It's, it's her last week and, and so forth.
I picked up my last two boxes of candy cigarettes.
Is that right?
And she says, I'm taking these home and throwing them away if you may take it. I go, oh my God. She goes, Friday.
Well, just if you come in again, you know, again, gee, I've been, I think I've been around it forever. Long as, almost as long as she has.
Yeah. There's, there's not many people that spend 40 years at one job like that.
No.
That's really an impressive.
And look how many, how many councils, mayors, city administrators she's handled.
Right.
She's so cynical. It was an easy job, wasn't it?
No.
No.
Another thing we got, we found, we just, we found that they were, they released pools.
Oh, yeah.
And so right now we're going to try to open limited, open for swim lessons or lap swim. And that includes some aquasizing because that's also called lessons. Uh, Monday is going to be the first day. She's going to try to get an idea how to keep the numbers. No locker rooms, no showers rooms. You just walk in, you go shoot it, get your towel, dry off and then leave. So you still gotta wipe the thing that, wipe the, you know, the chairs and stuff down that they just set out and then do all that stuff. And she's using the, she's using the state and talked to the Y in Muscatine and did some other things. So she's going to and put some stuff on Facebook with that too. But Monday is what, the day she's looking at. I mean, she could open up today, but she's just not prepared.
Yeah, it makes sense.
I just want to enter the Freedom Rock. It's been tremendous cooperation between the city, uh, for a convenience center for dirt drop off and stuff. Triple B has just been more than helpful. So it's been, it's really been, Rodney's really appreciative of farming and landscape. He's really working out for it.
Good.
That's good. Well, I heard tonight where Iowa State is going to have football games with crowds, but only half.
Half, $1 tickets. So, no, well, so
30,000 people instead of 60. I'm sure Iowa
They don't have 30,000 sold yet. So anybody willing to see the ticket, I got a letter from the day, but see, the ticket holders will get it through are guaranteed to see.
Yeah.
But then no, they won't be selling any individual game tickets or, and they think they'll sell 30,000. Cause I was worried about having to go up by myself, you know?
Yeah. Well, it's always kind of, you're kind of alone there anyway.
Yeah. You know, be quiet.
I don't think any of that's a done deal.
I know.
I think they're trying to make it sound as good as they can right now.
Yes, I think so.
But you know, that doesn't, you think of what they're losing when they, 30,000.
We talked about today.
Oh, yeah.
Football runs athletic.
Oh, yeah.
Of all of, every sport.
Anyway, just interesting. I guess life is kind of turning back to a little bit normal. I don't, uh, we went up to Amanda's on, um, Monday and had dinner there, which is kind of nice. So something different. So.
What restaurant do you like at the mound?
Oxio.
Oxio?
Oxio. Reader's Schitzel?
Reader's.
Yeah. Anyway, anything else on the good of the cause? If not, one, two, three, and.
Thanks, Bo. Thanks, Dave. See you guys. See you back here.
Bye.